That's fine.
And, uh...
He'll be here eventually.
Okay.
You need a drink?
Yes. Amendments, would you like to...
Sure.
The honor, please?
Heavenly Father, as we meet here tonight, we're thankful for the opportunity we have to serve the members of our town and for the opportunity we have to help the town grow and develop. We're thankful for all the aspired for things, the assets that we've got and things we say and do, that we might be able to get along more with another. In this way, I come to you with our son Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Now, we will call a meeting to order. It's a regular meeting of the town of Carlston. And we have an agenda. First of all, we'd like to recognize our media. Him, P. Boy, or the tempo star, and our good channel 32, Corvus MacCarlston. Thank you very much for being here. We have an agenda that needs to be amended somewhat. First of all, we need to delete from the agenda 5B, 8D, 13A, as our delegation scheduled for 7:00 p.m. is not going to be present today. Furthermore, we need to do an addition.
So what was the one, the total one being called?
All black sands.
All black sands.
Oh, 8D?
Yeah. And we need to do an addition, and we might put that addition on the 8E, and we will call it EMS request. Okay? All right, with those amendments, Councilor Barnes?
I want to adopt the agenda as amended.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. Welcome, Councilor.
Thank you.
We now have to go to the number six. So you're going to stay with me closely, because we're going to jump all around today. So six is the adoptions of minutes from the council meeting of November 10th, 2015. Councilor Baines, please?
I'll make the motion to accept the adoption of minutes of November 10th, 2015.
Thank you. Any questions regarding those minutes? All in favor? Thank you. The minutes that are adopted. We will now go to item seven, bylaw and policy. We have bylaw 1646, which is a council procedural bylaw. We need third reading. Councilor Baines?
I will move third reading of bylaws, 1646, council procedural bylaw.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Sing none. All in favor? Thank you. Now, for the next two motions need to be with me. Number one, bylaw 1582C requires a motion to approve these slight amendments that have been added to that. There were a few typos, a few wordings that needed to be fixed. They are not fixed. So before we approve that through, after the public hearing, we need to approve that amendment.
So after the public hearing, or no?
No, no.
I'll move to approve the amendments to the draft bylaw as...
Our 1582C, utility rate bylaw. Okay? All in favor? Thank you. Now, before we go to public hearing, also, we're going to need to pass first reading on bylaw 1606E, electricity distribution bylaw.
I move to approve first reading of bylaw 1582C, utility bylaw.
Okay.
Well, 1606E.
1606E.
Which one is that?
1606E.
1606E.
Oh. Give me that number again.
1606E.
1606E.
Right. Okay? All in favor? Thank you. Now, before we go to 7D, you need to go with me to 8C. There is a letter from a citizen, Mrs. K. Libel, who sent a request to the town regarding cottonwoods in their backyards that need to be cut down. Her request is not to pay, for the town to pay for the cutting down, which is going to cost her and her neighbor $6,000. It is to request the replacement of one tree, one, a little bit more mature fruit tree, as an apple tree. The cost of it to the town would be about $300. Councilor Baines, please?
Mayor, do we not have a tree planting policy in place for our boulevards as it is now?
Yes.
Could we not use that policy to do this, take care of this?
And, you know, I discussed exactly that very, that very item, which Jeff, essentially, what we need to do is that tree is going to go in her backyard. It's not going to be on a boulevard.
It's not public.
So, for that reason, it is a little bit different. But because under the present policy, which we are going to look at repealing, if we, we could have been hit with $6,000. And so $300 instead of $6,000, I would say it's a fairly nice deal.
Yes, new request.
I would say. So therefore, I would say the request is not unreasonable under the present policy that is in town.
Another question. What kind of tree do we use on the boulevards, Jeff?
Counselor, I don't have that list with me. There's a number that is considered suitable. I want to say there's some flowering crabs and ash and a few things, but, yeah, I don't have it in front of me. I wouldn't, see, the boulevard tree program is just a rebate for people. It's a $50 rebate if they go buy the tree.
Okay.
But we do budget money for tree replacement that, you know, we didn't have really any die on Main Street this year. I think it would be okay if council wanted to support this. We have money in our tree replacement to do that.
Right. But you are presenting an interesting point, Councilor Baines, because the discussion maybe will carry on when we discuss policy T5. Then I think we can come back to your notion of, don't we have money? Or don't we have a program set up? And we have something in place that maybe we can discuss a little bit later. Would that be okay with you?
Well, I'm just looking, Mayor, I'm just looking at the policy on the, on the tree, cottonwood tree policy, and it says it will be replaced with a green ash or some other suitable tree up to eight foot.
She's asking for an apple tree.
She's asking for a tree that is about eight-foot apple tree, 16 millimeters around, not very big, as you can see.
So, but my concern is, is that, is if we, if we go with changing our policy on the type of trees that we, we supply, are we going to do that for everybody? I mean, I think it should be in the policy that we replace them with a certain type of a tree. Amen. And because we could, we hit up with apple-bearing trees or any other kind of tree that they want to. So I think our policy needs to reflect...
Okay. That policy, as you can see, we're trying to repeal it altogether.
Right. August 25th.
But there is some discussion that will need to happen. This is why we need to kind of deal with that before we deal with the other portion, which kind of interlinking needs to be separated at this point.
So my thoughts on this particular request are, as you had mentioned, we could have, based on this policy, been hit up for the $6,000 of removal.
Totally.
$300 isn't a bad compromise, and yet, my understanding of the reason for the policy being there was to try and get rid of some of the cottonwood trees in the area, so that we didn't have that cotton all over the place. So on that basis of what the original policy's intent was, I think we should go ahead with it.
Councilor Pivon?
Yeah, again, on the request, I think it's very reasonable. I do read it just a little differently. The current policy says we'll assist with, and I don't know if, I mean, this has never been talked about, if that's a 50-50 agreement, or a 10-90, or 90-10, I'm sure is what they would like. But even, I mean, the $300 to me is completely reasonable. I do agree that we probably want to redo this policy. I don't know if we still have a common problem. And if we do, then maybe we as a town want to keep some kind of incentive for getting rid of it, but then maybe all we have to do is amend this policy.
Yeah. This is why we need to discuss that a little later. And all those are valid points that we need to kind of look at as to what kind of policy we want to establish to deal with that issue. Because cottonwood trees, column-bearing are all over the town. But there is something that we need to do. Incentive to look at? Sure, why not? And there is something in place that we could deal with. So, is anybody willing to...
Should we be looking at the policy first before we deal with this?
No, no, we can't. Because under the policy, we're supposed to pay the $6,000.
I think the confusion is in the order that they appear in the agenda. Are we doing 7D or 8C right now?
Right now, we have to do 8C. Because if we, if we keep the policy, then we pay the $6,000.
If that's the case, I'm happy to move to approve the necessary funding to put an apple tree of eight-foot size in her backyard.
Thank you.
For $300?
For up to $300, is that enough to cover it?
We provide the tree and then deal with it.
So up to $300 to provide a tree.
All in favor? Thank you. All right. So let's go back to 7D. 7D has an issue, as you, as you pointed out, Councilor Baines. My thought was, we have already put in place, through the beautification committee, a policy to have certain amount of trees added to our inventories of trees in the town. Jeff, can you, do you remember exactly what you said aside then? So many...
You have a couple of things. You remember last year, we put some money aside to do a number of fruit-bearing trees, and then going forward, we have a lesser amount to replace any that die, so to try and keep up that inventory that we put in. But you also have, I believe it's $2,500 in tree replacement, which is normally intended for Main Street. If we have one of those Main Street trees die, because we have to hydroback them out and put the new one in and do all that work. So we've been very fortunate the last couple of years. I think we've only had maybe one die in the last couple of years, so that's been fairly okay. So you have a couple of streams that we've been buying that with in the beautification.
Okay, Councilor.
A couple of questions, Jeff. When we don't have any trees die on there, do we just reserve those funds from the budget over to the following years?
Yeah, normally, we just bring it forward.
Okay. So, the issue is, if we review this policy, are we willing as council to maybe consider the idea of allowing an owner of trees in their backyard, who wants to cut them, that's their cost, but are we willing to assist them, the incentive, by allowing them the replacement of one tree up to maybe $300 for that property, one per property? Is that something we could consider?
I think if we, if we took our existing, you know, boulevard tree planting program and then revised that to include, you know, other, other trees, you know, on the property, you know, similar to what you suggested, I think that might be the way to do that. That way, it puts it in, into one policy that deals with beautification and trees and...
Because we want to encourage people to have trees, no doubt.
All right. About 11 years ago, I planted seven trees, four down the side of my property in the south and three across the back end. They are cotton-bearing trees, but they're not cottonwood. Now, if you go back to this policy, you know, to remove these, it's, it's not a cottonwood, but it's a cotton-bearing tree. So we need to look at that policy, and are we, are we eliminating all of the cotton-bearing trees?
So I think there's two parts to this discussion. One is, are we rescinding this policy? And if we do that, then the cotton-bearing part of it is out of the question, because it's not, that's not actually a part of the end of policies.
No.
And then it becomes a matter of what we're going to do going forward.
Right.
I kind of like what Counselor P. Boy said. If we include that in with our other tree policies, so that it's all in one spot. And I would like to see something along the lines of, you know, if we've allocated $2,000 for Main Street ones or for tree replacement or whatever that number is, if there is excess funds available, we don't have any trees die on Main Street, then those funds could be used to do something in people's yards.
Replacement.
I don't think we want to get into the policy of putting, putting apple trees in everybody's backyard in town.
Okay.
But beats a flowering crab.
But this, but this is the reason, one of the reasons why we eliminated the cotton-bearing is because of the allergies and the mess and everything else.
I agree with you.
So we need to have something to talk about, the cotton-bearing trees.
Yeah. But right now, Counselor, I think, you're right, Counselor Barnes, we have two kinds of discussion. One, we need to deal with the policy as it is, which only covers the cottonwood, which is the one that we need to repeal, so that the cost doesn't carry on to be the onus upon it, Tom.
It doesn't specifically say cottonwood here. It says, in the policy, it says cotton-bearing, of which there are many kinds. And I have about 25 of them in my backyard that I hate.
Yeah.
Right. But, okay, so...
I would entice you to get rid of those.
So, cut them down and chop them into firewood for me. So hardwood trees.
So I, I personally think that our first step is probably to rescind this existing policy.
Do you want to put the...
So I will move to rescind policy T5.
Thank you. Cottonwood tree policy.
Cotton-bearing.
Rather, it's called cottonwood tree policy.
Yeah. And just for clarification, then, the intention would then be to perhaps ask administration to come back to us with a suitable amendment to an existing tree, something else.
Absolutely.
That would outfit this need appropriately.
Okay. Counselor Baines?
See, what I'm suggesting here is this. I'm not going to cut all my trees down if I only get one tree back.
No, but the...
I plan those for purposes. You know, one is for shade-bearing, one is for privacy, and then one is for looks. And so if, we've got to consider that when we consider, like Counselor Barnes says, he's got 25 of them in the backyard. So you cut 25 trees down, what's it going to do to his backyard?
So that's where it comes into, that's part two of it?
Right.
When we do the, whatever amendments we make to our existing policy, I think that's when we have that discussion of what we're going to include in there, how many trees we allow somebody to do inside of that, et cetera. But for now, that's why I made the motion just simply to rescind this, this bylaw or this policy, and then we'll create the new policy with the, as Counselor P. Boy said there, to the whole of one spot.
Okay. Thank you. I think we had a good discussion around that. We realized that allergy-bearing trees, regimes-bearing trees is no fun at all to have in the community, but we all suffer more or less from them. So sooner or later, we need to create a better environment, no doubt. So right now, we have a motion on the table. Any more discussion or questions? Sing none. All in favor? Thank you. So that policy is repealed, and we will ask for administration, as Counselor Barnes requested and Counselor P. suggested, to look at a new policy revision for the existing tree policy we have in town. And thank you, Counselor Baines and Barnes, for bringing some additional thought.
Mayor, one of, one of the deficiencies in this policy was that it was too nebulous. It was not specific. So I would suggest that if we...
It needs to be precise.
If we, yeah, if we come up with a new policy, that we put a specific dollar amount on how much the town is willing to, you know, assist. And I don't know if we, can we restrict or prohibit the planting of new cotton-bearing trees in the community? Is that, is that a possibility?
So you may rate it.
I don't know.
I just, I'm just, I just typed an exact question. Could we prohibit the type of trees that could be planted in town?
Yeah.
That might be a phone call for us.
It's a good question.
I may as well just look into it.
It's a good question. I don't know if we can or not, but anyways, whatever.
Anybody coming to that?
All right.
It would be great to discourage it. Whatever it is.
Okay. We need to carry on and look at 8A.
Not a mayor on that particular item. I was personally a little surprised to not see that as, as in camera. So, I mean, just before we discuss it, I was just wondering if we wanted to address that issue.
Which items are 8A? I'm not discussing any personnel.
It's no personnel.
Yeah.
It is, as you could see, a proposal. It's a draft proposal.
I was just thinking, it has possible ramifications.
No. It is, yes and no, but I don't think more no than yes, in a sense that you are offering the possibility of assistance, assistance to the actual electrical department. That's what we're looking at.
Excellent. I discussed this with Jeff yesterday afternoon, and I suggested the same thing, but it was clear that there would be no personal information or names.
No, absolutely none.
And so it doesn't need to be in camera.
No. So essentially, if you look at it, that proposal is to allow people in a business to come up with proposals as to how they would extend their services to add on to what we have already. So whichever form, mixture, hybrid, hybrid model, whatever it might be, we really don't know until we put that proposal forward.
I'd suggest that we turn it back to the, to administration to carry forward with this and let them decide what kind of an RFP we need to do.
Essentially, the reason it is there is to offer support to administration to carry on with what they intend to do.
Do we need a motion to approve this draft? Or are you just looking for some general direction?
I think what I wanted to add on here for is, I wanted to make sure before we sent anything out, that I was interpreting, that we're all on the same page with what we're looking for and what we're asking for. I want to be clear, it's an information gather only. And I made it clear within the RFP that there's many correct choices here, and those range from status quo to who knows what will be proposed. I don't know. So I just wanted to make sure that there weren't some chunks of information that you might want to know as a council that would assist in your evaluation prior to this going out. This is really, really what it came down to for me.
Counselor P.?
I'm assuming that this is, you've already discussed this with our electrical department.
Yeah. Leonard's been working with me on it.
They're on board with, with this proposal or this request for proposal.
Yeah.
Counselor Barnes?
What I, when, as I read through it, what I really got out of it is almost what Jeff just said. This is pretty open-ended.
It totally is.
It's really an information gathering, request for proposal, where we're just trying to see what interest is out there and whether or not it fits into a future direction that we later decide we want to go. So I think this is really well drafted as it is.
Personally, I appreciated the same open-endedness for the same reason. It's non-threatening, it's non-binding.
The thing that I appreciate about this is section five, where they talk about insurance, a workman's compensation and stuff like that.
Right, that need to be covered.
The liability for the town. And I, I appreciated reading that.
Yeah. We totally obligated to that.
Yeah. And again, I just, for the public that may watch and for you as council, I want to be clear, there's no foregone conclusions here. But we may find, when this information comes back, that there isn't someone out there that's prepared to provide service to the degree that which we would expect. That's, I specifically put questions in, for example, about non-emergent response time and emergent response time. What if non-emergent response time is five working days? Well, that's not going to work for us. You know, that just simply makes our decision to maintain some form of status quo potentially much clearer. You know, so I, when I worked with Leonard on this, and I appreciate Counselor P. Boy, your concern about, about that, this is really, we want to see what's out there. We have some feel from especially Fordus. They've informally kind of talked to us about a number of things, but now's the time to put it down, put some hard numbers down, and see what the industry wants to provide.
Yeah.
I don't know if this is, I don't know what the best way to go is with this system, but this is intended to help us figure that out. And that's how I looked at it from the start.
Essentially, yeah, essentially, the public needs to understand that where we at and what prompted this proposal draft is that we have really one lineman left on our payroll, and we used to have three. Therefore, we short, not for the winter season, because the work has been wrapped up as we speak, but for the spring season, when stuff start to come again, we need to know how we're going to do business.
Mayor, I just wanted to add for the sake of somebody who may be watching this, this isn't a discussion about selling or who owns the...
Right. It has no bearing on selling the asset.
We own it, it's no discussion about selling it. This is simply about how we're going to go forward in the operations of it.
Exactly. And the maintenance of the system at the level that is sustainable for town. In other words, when we have a call, we want to know, we can respond. Okay? Counselor Baines?
But we've also already in place, what do we call it, emergency shared services.
Like mutual agreement?
Yeah, yeah. On a regional level, we have that.
Already, already. So if, if our department could take care of it, we could call somebody right now.
Yeah, at this point, as an emergency.
Right. So we have time to, to deal with this.
We, it's not, it's not urgent. We have the whole winter to, to deal with it. Okay? So, administration, Jeff, what would you like us to do? You want to take it for information, or do you want something more specific?
If there's nothing that was glaring, that we're missing some pieces, I'll just move ahead and we'll start distributing it.
Please.
We'll tidy it up a little bit and begin distributing.
All right. So are you going to take care of it before the end of the month?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Maybe not the end of this month, but definitely by the end of the year. I think we said we were distributing December 15th.
Right. By January 29th.
That's your response.
January 29th is your response.
It's a response. I think we had December 15th as distribution.
Okay, all right. So it's in your hand.
Thank you.
Okay. 8B. Jeff, I don't know that you brought that 37 gift.
I'll run down and grab it right now.
Please. Okay. Let me explain to you what that is. We went, when we had AUMA, we went with Jeff to 37 Urban Indian Housing Authority. Big celebration was for the use for them, that they started that program, and they really took the time to really explain how this came to be. We have seven houses in our town that are 37. And 37 is an authority that is looking after those houses in order for the property to be maintained at a fair level in a neighborhood that they're in.
They're natural.
So that's what they are. And so in recognition for support to them, they presented us with, thank you, they presented us with this, this 37 urban housing, and we will find a place for it as being a partner with them.
That was nice of them to do that.
So, and we intend, brought them a gift. My husband had done something special for them. So it was an Indian chief in wood that he had done. So that was quite nice of them. Okay? So you can see we're moving along fairly quickly here. Let's go to 8E. Counselor Barnes, I'm going to call on you.
Just hang on a second here, sorry, I got family calling me about my brother, they texted me, so.
Counselor, do you want me to take this?
Yes, please.
Yeah, absolutely. So what it basically is, is the Rotary Club on a regular basis takes vehicles down to Mexico. Last year, if you remember, they took down the handy, old handy bus down there. So we have an old emergency ambulance vehicle that is being, in the process of being replaced, we should have the new one in place by the end of this month. And so the proposal was to donate the old one for Rotary to take down and donate down to Minnesota. And so because the town of Carson is one of the owners of that indirectly there, it needs to come before the council, for the council's approval to do that donation.
Mayor, as I said on that committee a while back, this ambulance has been decommissioned for approximately a year, and so it cannot be used as an ambulance in Canada, or in Ottawa too, but it can be used down there, and they'll put it immediately to work.
But this isn't a case of donating a vehicle that we are in need of here.
Right.
It's first of all.
It's badly placed already.
The Rotary is a fantastic humanitarian program, and I think if that authority can help them, and if we can approve that help, well, means.
I'll make a motion that we allow Carson EMS, Carson County EMS Services to donate the ambulance for a cost of $1 to the Los, Los Angeles project.
I think it's from the Rotary Club, I think it's to the.
It's to the Rotary Club. If I could just maybe front, run an amendment to that, that we support the emergency services donation to it as opposed to allowing.
Yeah. Support, yeah, yeah.
The thing about that ambulance too, is that once the Rotary Club gets it, they have their, their project, they refurbish them, they fix them up really good so that they're, they're ready to go when they get down there.
And it's a long ride down there.
It's a long drive.
Good mechanic.
It's a great thing that people absolutely are so grateful down there when they receive it.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table, I don't want to forget the motion. So, all in favor? Thank you. Alright, now, let's go, eight, under nine, financial report, you don't have one this term. Under ten, committees. I have some committees.
Mayor, before we move on financially, can I ask our administration to share with us where our pool of funding is at this point in time?
You mean where we're at?
Oh, yeah, where are, where are we at with the project, and how's the funding for that?
Counselor, can you keep it under questions?
Sure, or even ten or.
Put it, put it under, under eleven, would you mind?
You bet.
Okay, thanks.
I do like.
All you gentlemen, thank you, Counselor. Okay, I shall not ask you that question. Okay, under ten committees, so let's go through the committees. There are some that have not been filed, and I need your help. Okay, the Act Society nominating effort, okay, Alberta Southwest, you were not there, Counselor, at the last October seventh, you gave us a minute. Is that a problem for you, that committee?
No, not at all, I, in fact, I, I'm on a subcommittee of that committee that is driving the whole internet and web, but they do that at the end of the month, so my meeting with them is tomorrow.
Okay.
Yeah.
So if we could know those type of thing ahead of time, so that we can have a little note there, so I don't bother you with the questions.
Mayor, if it's alright, and it's, it's approved by this council, we have no meeting report for the airport, but if, if, if it's possible, and if it's allowed, could Jeff update us on a little bit of the, of the airport, of what's happening out there?
I really don't know that we have any more information than we had last month. Okay, go ahead.
I think it's important we know.
Yeah, so I, I finally got the information from Parks and Environment and Parks, sorry, is who it is now. So the town does not own the airport land, we have a license of occupation to use a small portion of the airport land, and what I found out is there's actually sixty-five and a half acres of airport lands out there. We cannot, under the license of occupation, do any type of subletting or subleasing arrangement, however, they're totally, that's just because that's the current arrangement. This agreement was put in place in nineteen seventy-five, is when we looked at it, and they're open to amending the agreement to accommodate our needs to some degree, I think. But I talked to them about just transferring the lands over to the local municipality, you know, if there's no need for the province to have it, that we, so we had some discussion, they sent me the process for applying for those lands. Well, when I get all that sorted out, because I just got it not long ago, we'll have some discussion. In my mind, the county is probably the reasonable person to assume the lands, and maybe take a stab at getting all sixty-five and a half from the province, because it's all sitting there. So, yeah, there's a number of new things that have come to light on the airport, but the bylaw and then the potential agreement we're going to do with them won't fit under our current license of occupation. So we have to look at that a little bit.
Good question, and thank you, Jeff, for the update, thank you.
Just a quick clarification on this, so just for my understanding, an airplane's running down, doing a takeoff on the runway there, it's cracked unfortunately, the land shift or whatever, airplane crashes, who's liable?
Oh man, great question.
Is that the town? Is that on the runway?
We carry liability insurance for the airport and the activities that go on there.
We, we have a kind of.
I would say no matter how you slice it, we'd be third-partyed at least into that mess, no matter how you slice it. But, so yeah, there, there's a number of issues there, right? One of the things that I mentioned before is, we've budgeted money for next year to do a real property report, so that we can get all the easements extended, because everybody's about that short of their hangar to run the gas line. So the easements don't extend to their hangars? Well, if we don't own it, I'm not really crazy about paying $5,000 to have a real property report done.
Right.
You know, especially now that the parcel's sixty-five acres and not the five or six that I thought it was.
That's more than $5,000.
Yeah, that's my worry, that's my worry.
Mayor, as I sat down with Jeff and we discussed the airport yesterday afternoon, because this has been coming to light, I think it'd be interesting when Jeff brings the total report back to us, that we look at the financial end of it too, you know, where we discussed with the county and with the town, and I think we can work some, some good things out for us.
Yeah, what Counselor Bang is referring to is, we charge a lease amount, it's relatively nominal, but we charge them, but the county also taxes the improvements there, because it's within the county boundaries. So there's a couple of revenue streams there that if we were to get them both going back towards the airport, we may be able to support it a little more appropriately, but.
Or we may need to.
We may need to work and work with the county and help them potentially reassume those lands.
So, Counselor Creed, that's.
Yeah, there's, now, that other sixty-five acres, right now, is somebody farming that?
I believe so, yeah, yeah.
And who's getting the revenue?
I don't know, our revenue obliga, we're obligated to pay the province $137 a year to occupy the land, which I was going to point out, the contract says sixty-five, but I assume it doubled somewhere in there since nineteen seventy-five.
Mayor inflation gets. Mayor again, Counselor Creed brought up an interesting thing, and we need to know what's happening with that, and what's happening with all, with all the monies that are at the airport, so we can collaborate it, and we can make a decision on what we want to do.
There's an interesting, if you look at county, if you were to talk to some of the county councillors of any county, you would find there's a lot of interesting history with licenses of occupation, because they tend to get claimed and understood and assumed to be somebody's land that's used it historically, and the province really doesn't pay a whole lot of attention to sixty-five acres down in Southern Alberta. So there's probably somebody who's been using it for thirty years that, or four, I guess for forty years, sorry, my math's a little better there, forty years that, I don't know what the story is, but.
Maybe we should send the bill and see.
Yeah, maybe, maybe we're owed for a little bit of farming, I don't know, I don't know. But that's a quick story, what I finally got this last few days from the province.
What do you, Jeff?
Sure.
We have the collegiate committee still there as a committee, what's happening with that?
I'm not assigned to it, so I don't know.
Counselor Barfus.
So, for all intents and purposes, it's not functioning right now, there's a couple of inquiries going on, that we're waiting for some reports back, but it's.
So what is that going to take to move that committee?
I don't think that there's, unless, unless somebody wanted to write a check for six figures to move it forward, I think that's kind of almost where it's at at this point.
Yeah, and I can speak to that as well, we need perhaps to open it up to maybe more volunteers as well, where there's a manpower issue.
Okay, so does administration know that to put.
Well, that's probably something we should have a meeting about, and then to decide where, but right now it's in a holding pattern, and it's not costing anybody anything, the downside is, it's not helping. Well, they haven't said.
They haven't spent a penny.
It's not their point, the point is, is something that we desire to see moved, and so I would like to see some movement, all once and for all, call it that.
Yeah, so the, the big picture of it right now is, is the, the structure that we originally were going after.
It's changed.
That's completely changed.
Right.
There's some ideas on some potential options that we're waiting for some reports back on, and until we have those, we don't know whether it's dead or not. My personal opinion is, it's, it's on life support.
Well, it's all on their end, isn't it, Counselor Barfus?
What's that?
It's all on their end.
For which part?
For the response back to us, or whatever.
Yeah, well, as far, as far as like, as Southern Virginia goes, that's dead.
No, no, this one, this one we knew that we know is gone, but there was the idea of becoming a virtual university from somewhere.
Right, so still pursuing a couple of options there, just waiting for some reports back.
Alright, well, we shall wait for the report. Okay, FCSS, Counselor Bangry, you went to that meeting, but I don't have a report.
I, I, I went to that meeting, and I, this is my first meeting, and it was a dispersal of the, of the funds for that year, it went, how can I say, it went really good, and I just, I just was not up to speed on, on the actual dispersments and how that happened and so forth, and.
Okay, now.
And I'm sure that, I've got a book on the policies and stuff like that, and I, I've had an opportunity to look through it.
Do you mean a little bit of a sense? I know that I want to bring a resolution to the FCSS AGM, what is that resolution on about?
I don't know, maybe Counselor Creed knows.
No, I'm not aware of what that is right now.
Maybe you can find out for me. Okay, so, fire, I'm back at you, Counselor Barfus, and my two bits of discussion with Danny today triggered some interest. He said that next meeting you are going to formally approve the requisition, but that at this meeting, he wanted us to review his proposals regarding the budget, so can you help me? We have them there, if, I have asked Jeff to give us a copy of it, just for the sake of it, if that helps you when you go back to your meetings, there's a few things that we probably need to discuss, and maybe we should discuss them now rather than later. Do you want to distribute them? Sure.
This is, you, you probably have this, Danny sent it out a few days ago.
I'm not picking on you guys, I'm just trying to help you. I'm just going to help you push your work along, because eventually that'll come as a requisition.
So this is a mail sheet.
I, I think, I think maybe to try to understand the whole, maybe best to start to look at the fleet replacement forecast, because this is what's going to make the, the greatest impact. So the fleet replacement, really, if you add up the bottom column, the bottom line over up to 2030, you would say, you would see that for every year, in order for that plan to work, Danny needs about $124,000 bucks a year. In capital expenditure or capital revenue over each of those years. Now, that's something you need to keep in mind, that amount of money is very big.
That's between the county and the town, right?
Yeah, that's still $60,000.
Yeah, sixty grand for us, two thousand, yeah.
Okay, that's a lot of money. Then, if you go back to the 2016 budget, the way it is given to us, you would say that Danny shows a reduction in the requisition compared to 2015, 2014, but in fact, is really only a very cosmetic reduction. The reason being that in former years, there was a capital equipment replacement of $40,000, if you looked at the bottom capital budget on line sixty-nine, and this year, it appears as an expense somewhere of $10,000. Where is it?
Right there, the same. Follow the total capital budget.
Sixty-five and seventy.
Right.
Yeah.
So you can see that in order to show requisition reduction this year, really, there is a shortage of $30,000 in capital, which last year.
The hunk of was there last year.
Which last year was included in the requisition.
Which is now what he's proposing would be a $62,000, so it would be actually an increase of another $30,000 over top of what.
So when you really look at the true increase of that requisition, it's fairly substantial.
It is.
Because now we're talking 173,612, but we're also talking for the town, $40,000 extra for the town, almost the same for the county portion, so that's an extra $80,000. So really, the requisition as a whole for that EMS is really 173,612 plus $80,000.
Plus six, plus 62,000.
Well, really, we're not bringing 62,000, we're going to, we have budgeted $40,000.
Well, you can, I know, but that's, that's what he's, if you go through the two numbers together, what he's proposing here is the 173 is a regular requisition, plus another $62,000 is what it works out to over the time period. Now, for this year, he's got it at, I think, $40,000 for, for this year, but it averages out to $62,000 a year.
So, yeah.
Mayor.
So we need to.
I'm gonna stick my neck out.
Oh, stick your neck, because there is, there is a capital need there, as I told you, 124,000 is what it needs.
But what bothers me is this, in the, in the fire system and, and the firefighting system, there's this perception that your trucks and your equipment will only run for fifteen years, regardless of, regardless of what condition they're in, they'll only be good for fifteen years. I do not believe, because I come out of the mechanical field, that you replace a truck just to have a shiny new paint job. If that truck and that, that equipment is working great, why replace it?
Danny said he, he put a life of thirty years on each machine, is that a fact?
I don't, I, I, I can't see it, I'm sorry.
See, from, from 2015 to 2030.
Well, that's fifteen years, but I don't know how all the trucks are. Well, that's 15 years, but I don't know how old the trucks are to now, right? That's something I do not know.
I, I know, from, from my perspective, I was getting the idea too that it was a matter of policy to replace every so many years.
Exactly.
But it's not a matter of policy. It shouldn't be a matter of policy. It should be, the policy should be that if the machinery is working, then you just keep it going. But if the machinery is failing to the point where it's going to cost too much money, then you've got to look at replacement.
Okay.
That's my feeling.
Okay, so also a point, did you discuss those points though?
I always see Counselor Bengry's impression of the fire world's perception of when it needs to be replaced is very accurate. And that is, what I was getting from Danny was that that's exactly the terms that he's, the friends who reference that he's thinking in. And while we were talking, and I was the new guy at the table, and so I was still trying to absorb a lot here. But while we were talking, that was one of those things that was going through me is of what 15 years later, why is that machine have to be replaced? I believe that those, that a lot of that machinery could very easily be 20, 25, 30 years out.
Well, Counselor Barfus, how far does it go?
Okay.
Hey, you know, and, and so we've got, we've got a 15-year-old truck with 5,000 miles on it. We do.
But help me then, help me, because that requisition is going up well.
So, so I, I was not under the impression that we were doing requisitions at our next meeting. So that information that you had was news to me here.
Well, that's what I got from Jeff.
And that may be what he's planning on, on bringing to the table next, next meeting.
This is what is going to be...
Yeah, well, we, we looked at these last meeting. But I didn't want away from our last meeting thinking that we were going to be issuing requisitions in December.
I think you are.
If I may, and this is just for clarification, because this is my first time seeing this. I'm having a hard time seeing where it's implied that the requisition amount increases to the municipalities.
Okay.
So I, I mean, I see where they're saying requisition appears.
And so where?
In addition, you're saying there's 63,000.
So they're separating out the capital requisition from the regular requisition.
Which they've never done before?
Never.
No, no.
They've never done before.
No. So if you look at, if you look at the requisitions from 2015 on, on the budget part, so at the very, the very bottom,
Yes.
You'll see $40,000 was the capital portion of that.
And so that 40 is disappearing on the next budget.
So, yeah.
And this is separate now and they're asking for more than this.
That's 60?
Well, right now...
Because Jeff from 40 to 60 sounds like only 20.
Right now Danny's, no. Danny knows, as you know, Danny was there at our last budget. Danny knows that we have reserved $40,000 because we knew that somehow, some kind of capital needs were going to, to hit us. We kind of knew it. Looking at this, it is obvious to me that it is coming away. My question is, in separating those two amounts, one is a requisition, the other is, seems to be a desire of Danny for us to have a policy in place, almost a policy in place, saying that we will reserve so much money every year and not to make it part of the requisition.
So, so if I might, if you, if you look, Counselor Poy, if you look at what the actual requisition's amount started, it drops by $14,000 this year from last year, right?
Right.
But he's, but he's wiped out $30,000 difference in the requisition. So really, the requisition hasn't dropped because he doesn't have that capital in there anymore. Everything else has gone up enough that it almost, with the $14,000, it, it was all of the capital requisition from last year. And that's where this capital number gets really big and hurt.
Okay, so maybe what, what would be appropriate for counsel to send back to our counselors that are there is number one, to really try to understand that fleet that they have and how old is that equipment that they have right now? And what could be the extended life of each of those equipment?
So if you look on his fleet replacement forecast, he gives an estimate there of what the cycle is.
Yeah.
Okay, so...
He has put them to 20 years, some 15.
Some are 20 years, some are 15. Some of them you don't have a choice on, for example, on the scuba stations and bottles and stuff. Those are, are pretty much mandated, but they're, they're relatively small amounts.
All right, so are we satisfied that when you have an engine pump, 20 years' life, that it is appropriate to replace it? Maybe Jeff could give us a better sense regarding what we do at the town level regarding depreciation or amortization of capital assets? What do we have? Maybe, maybe you do, maybe you don't, I don't know.
We would have useful life guidelines for the accounting of the assets?
I would imagine a fire truck must have that too.
So they, I couldn't speak to the life of that equipment, I just don't know it. You know, it's much more complex than a three-quarter ton truck. So we've been trying to upgrade our fleet and machinery, but we, we haven't said that after X amount of years we're disposing of a piece of equipment. We just assess condition every year.
Right.
So obviously, there are years assigned for accounting purposes, but we don't use them for replacement necessarily.
So you use, you use your judgment as to the life of that machinery? So maybe that is something you want to question, I don't know.
I know, just as an example, I had a conversation with Counselor Gates from Glenwood today about their, their fire truck. And they're, they're actually a little annoyed at the way this is all included in here.
Exactly.
Because they paid for all but 20% of the cost of it. And now it's suddenly an asset of emergency services over here. So there's a, there's a bunch of issues there as far as the equipment goes that needs to be dealt with.
Okay, so Counselor Barfus would be fair enough to, for you to question?
Although, yeah.
Capital?
I think that would be a tough one.
And Counselor Barnes, you two can work together regarding that. I really feel also that we need to try to figure out what we're going to do regarding the way we're going to fund that capital. What is it? Should it be proportionate according to the membership, the same way as it is for the rest? In other words, if we pay $40,000, would it be fair for the county to pay 37 and the other, whatever the difference is? And if so, how is that fund administered? Who administers it? What is it, that money?
What would be our position as the way we would prefer for that capital to be requisitioned? Because that, that's part of the questions come up.
Well, Danny, you could come at a better time.
Perfect time.
Danny, we have some questions for you.
Okay.
But honestly, we have a public hearing.
Yeah.
So you just have the hook.
You've got a couple of minutes.
We have two minutes.
We, we have two minutes.
Okay.
Danny, help us, if you don't mind, understand a little bit the capital requisition, the way you envisioned that amount of money. Because we looked at your figures there. If we look at all that amount of money, until 2030, we calculated it, it represents about $124,000 of capital revenues that you would need to raise, okay?
Correct.
Per year. So in other words, you were looking at the towns, the members, to kind of help you with purchasing all that equipment over those years. One question that we have is, how do you intend us to help you with that capital?
Okay, well, first of all, this is basically come about by ULC standard. With the equipment that we have, with the understanding of a couple of things on this, the ones that are in green, I don't know, do you all have a...
Yeah.
So if they are in green, they're not even calculated into those things because there's a few provisions that we could change or we could alter this a little bit. Some of this are mere suggestions. This is a guideline, whether we choose to do anything or nothing or something. It's just an awareness thing of what we have and what it is today or going forward, what it projected to cost to replace. So whether we choose to do anything or some of it or none of it, it's just more of an awareness.
Okay, so when you say more awareness, you have a certain amount of trucks, it's in the later, have a certain life.
Correct.
And the life might be beyond what you have as expiry years. Because that's a paper kind of date, right?
Correct.
The trucks could go beyond that.
There, yes, with some provisions. And I could give you more information on that for the ULC standard. In the real world, in the bigger cities, they'll suggest that it's a 15-year cycle. In this, I've suggested a 20-year cycle, as, as far as the pumps are replaceable. And they are a fairly big-ticket item. So having said that, we could extend it somewhat. But having said that, you're losing value going forward. The longer you keep them, the less they're going to be worth later.
Danny, do you keep an accounting on each unit?
Yes.
Separate? So you could verify what is costing us to operate that vehicle over a year's time?
Well, I mean, we could, I could pull it out, what we spent and then break it down per year, yes. The invoices that I pay are based on...
As a counselor, I'd like to see those. And that, that merits whether we replace a unit or not, you know, as far as I'm concerned.
I guess part, part of my, just to clarify things here. So when we say a replacement for a pump truck is $350,000, $350,000, 20 years from now, or 10 years from now, there's also residual value from that truck then, like that's...
It would have some value. For example, the ones we have now, engine two and four, right now I'm being told they're a value today of about $50,000 each.
Okay, so that's not factored in?
Correct.
But Danny, at the same token, those engines could go to Hillspring, Glenwood or something like that for their fire equipment?
They could. One of those bumpers, just because of the, the guidelines say, for example, if Hillspring rolled it, they couldn't operate it with two people.
Okay. Thank you. It's 6 o'clock and we have a...
Should I answer your question?
You'll be back.
We'll be back if you don't mind giving us a couple more minutes afterwards. Thanks. So maybe it'll help us sort out our questions.
Good.
Thanks. So at this time, Counselor Bengry?
I will, I will move that we adjourn to a public hearing for utility...
Utility rate by law.
Utility rate by law.
And the electrical distribution.
And electricity distribution.
And electricity distribution by law, sorry.
That's all right. All in favor? All right. Okay. Jeff, it's yours to help us with this, please. Thank you.
Well, in the absence of a large delegation, unless Danny came specific to talk about utility bylaws, I'll try and be relatively brief. Is the first one on the agenda 1582, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Is the first one, okay. So we'll start with that one.
1582C.
Okay, so 1582C, it's a bylaw of the Town of Cartston to amend by law 1582, which is utility rates. The Town of Cartston, the Province of Alberta, assembled amendments as follows. That Schedule A, the setting out of the rates, will be replaced with the new Schedule A and that the bylaws 1582A and B will be repealed. Now, with that being said, I'll generalize some of the things within the bylaw. First of all, I want to explain the rationale for the bylaw change. With utility rates bylaw, there seems to be through the discussion, two rationale that were forefront. One was to amend the rates to reach a capital reserve amount that is appropriate to fund capital expenditures and reduce dependencies of federal and provincial transfers for utility installation. This leads to better financial sustainability. The second reason is to reallocate the rates so that the users of the utility pay their equitable share of revenue into the utility. So those are two of the driving factors behind the utility rate. One of the things that counsel will find, and I need to offer you a, well, I'll just explain it within the bylaw. Without going over every rate structure and every class, the ones that would hit the biggest bulk of any consumers within the community is the residential metered rate for water. 2016 to 1925 as the flat rate and going to $20 thereafter for both the next two years, the consumption being at 85 cents to 91 and then to a dollar. Commercial and industrial metered flat rate, the same, flat rate schedule, in fact, both are the same. 1925 to 20 for the flat rate and 85 cents going up to a dollar in 2018. So that stays the same. The only change you would see is in the consumption rate of institutional. So that starts a little bit higher and ends a little bit higher from 93 cents to a dollar eight. Otherwise, the other thing to be pointed out that would hit almost the entire community collectively is in the sewer rates. The in-town metered sewer rate going from $42 to $44 from 2016 to 2018. And the commercial and industrial doing the same, $42 to $48. Remembering there is a consumption piece on that as well. So that consumption piece, as you'll recall, was averaged. Instead of there being a reward for high consumption, the rate was averaged. And what that did is it also has the institutional users paying almost identical to their consumption on the system. So the revenue almost totally equals consumption. That is the, the high-level hits on the utility rate bylaw. And this is reviewed about every three years. There are a number of other schedules for non-metered rural and a number of other items there. I don't see anyone in the, in the delegation that would fall into those rate classes. So I'm not too concerned about exploring every one of those rates for explanation of the bylaw, unless counsel feels otherwise.
Counselor Sanders, Jack, for those of you who haven't got a rate sheet, they're in the back desk there. For those of you that came in and didn't grab one, they're on there and you can understand what we're talking about.
Okay, anything else on 1582C, counsel?
All right, so that is good on this one. Do you want to carry on with the next one?
Yeah, I'll speak to 1606E and then if there's no questions, you can go back to your regular meeting. So 1606E is a bylaw of the Town of Cartston to amend the electricity distribution bylaw. Cartson is the owner of the distribution system within the town limits, must have a bylaw regulating the costs and the fees associated with operating that system. This amendment has two parts. Schedule A is the rate schedule that will be effective January 2016. And Schedule B is the terms and conditions. And I'll touch on each of those schedules for the sake of clarity for the public. The rationale for changing each of these bylaws, for Schedule A, the rate schedule, really makes it so that the rate reflects the changes that were forecast by both the Alberta Energy, Alberta Electrical Systems Operator, ISO, as we call them for short, and Fortis. ISO is the one who our transmission, the transmission rate portion of the bill goes to. That is to fund the costs of the large transmission system through the province. The distribution portion goes to the Town of Cartson and to Fortis to get the electricity from the substation northeast of town to the Town of Cartson. And we've been given notice of increases in both of those rates. So the rate changes are to accommodate those. Rational for Schedule B, terms and conditions, was simply to make sure that our terms and conditions are updated to ensure compliance with ISO and the Alberta Utilities Commission and any other provincial regulation and also to clarify areas of ambiguity. And I'll speak to that a little bit more in a minute. So for rates, really, the best way to deal with this, and it's maybe a sad commentary on the bylaw, is not to refer specifically to the bylaw. The bylaw is listed in kilovolt and kilowatt hour per day charges. And the fact of the matter is, none of us know what that means for the inbuilt. Simple as that. So what you have in the package and what we have on the back table for anyone interested is a typical monthly impact, that's one of the things. And well, I'll talk about the proposed changes of transmission and distribution rates. In the transmission charges, the service charge and the system usage charge, there is no proposed change for 2016 from what it was in 2014 and 15. That will stay static. The change will be in the transmission rider. In 2014, there was a $4 transmission rider charge. In 2015, there was a $6 transmission rider charge. In 2015, there was a $6 transmission rider credit. The proposal for 2016 is that there is neither a charge nor a credit rider, and that that will just come out. In the distribution charges, and this is largely in part to a pretty high percentage increase coming from our cost of distribution, that rate will go from, in 2015, $17.38 per month to $19.11, and the system usage charge from 1652 to 1818. The local access fee will also see a few 50 cent, not even that, 40 cent change. What that means is, looking strictly at the rates, it's a 1.9% change from 2014. So I've taken 2015 out of that because there was such a large credit rider. It was an anomaly. So going back, it is a bit of an increase over 2014, all in the distribution piece. You will see the same proportionate breakdown in small commercial and medium commercial with proportionate actually decreases in those. And the better sheet to look at for the impact is the sheet that says typical monthly bill impact on the whole bill. Remember, the distribution and transmission don't consider consumption. They're not actually considering the cost of energy. So when we factor in the cost of energy on a typical 600 kilowatt hour user per month, we anticipate a change from 2014 of 1% is what the impact on the typical residential user will see, is a 1% change. It is a 10% change from 2015 because there was a $6 credit rider in 2015. Small commercial will see a 2.7% decrease on average from 2014, and large, medium commercial will see a 3.7% decrease on average from 2014. So those are the ones we use to compare with the anomaly in 2015. So that, in short, is a summary of Schedule A in the bylaw. Schedule B, and well, I want to not put too many people to sleep on this one. I'll touch briefly. What was changed was the terms and conditions in our, how we regulate the distribution system. So we have to, by rule, have a bylaw that outlines how we deal with our customers, how we deal with retailers operating in the area, and how we deal with all the other stakeholders. I think the best way, as I look through this, is I simply took a few notes from the current bylaws as it reads, and I'll just point out a number of things that were added to the new bylaw, because there really wasn't much taken out. There was just a number of pieces added for clarity. So in definitions, there was a number of definitions added, just to add clarity. The, under general provisions, there was some regulatory authority, how we get our authority and where other parties get their authority, that was added. There was, under dispute resolution, either whether it's between customers and retailers, or us and retailers, or any of the parties, there were some items added as far as dispute resolution. In the retail access service portion, there was a couple of things cleared up around de-energization or shutting off meters. Under metering equipment, there was some things added about un-metered sites or changing metered equipment, and there was also conditions added under each class about hard-to-access or unsafe meter locations, and some of the obligations or things we can do to mitigate that. Invoicing, there was a few things added. Eligibility of retailers to operate within the community, there was a couple of pieces added. Other than that, there was a section added on distributed, sorry, distributed generation services, so renewable generation within the community, just making sure that there's some regulation and construction consistency and regulation consistency around those pieces. And other than that, that was the changes to the terms and conditions. There wasn't anything, in my opinion, that would materially affect anybody, any current customers or any residents of the town, under their current contracts or obligations or current usage. It's simply administrative changes. So that's what I would give you on bylaw 1606E.
All right.
Yeah, on this last bit that you were talking about for the renewable, do we have a policy in place where we would credit someone for putting power back into the grid?
So we, as a town, will not. They can work in agreement with their retailer to net meter so that they can put back, and they can get a meter that reverses. And so that credits them or bills them, depending on which way the energy's flowing. So we don't enter into agreements to pay for that. We just have to make sure there's infrastructure pieces in place, that if you have solar panels on your home, for example, and we need to go work on the lines feeding your home, there's not power feeding back through the lines. So there's some code issues we need to work through, and to accommodate people who want to use renewables, we need to make sure our system can accommodate it as well. So it's touching on a few of those pieces.
All right. At this point, I will ask the public if they have some questions. If not, we are good and will carry on proceeding.
So just reconvene to council meeting.
I'll move that we reconvene back to our regular council meeting.
All in favor? Thank you. You've been a great audience. Thank you so much.
Danny likes to come listen to me speak.
All right. At this point, we might deal with the motion concerning those two, those two bylaws, and we'll carry on with what we're doing. Okay, so at this point, for bylaw 1582C, utility rate bylaw, we need a third reading.
So yeah, I will move the third reading to bylaw 1582C, utility rate bylaw, which only needs a third reading.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All right, now, for bylaw 1606E, we passed first reading. We had the public hearing.
That's D, right? You said E.
E. It is E, counselor.
It's C on your agenda, it's E on the.
You really don't like that one.
Well, no, it's not that, it's confusing.
Seven C.
Yeah, I'm right there.
Right.
I'm right there. But it said down below that we have to rescind 1606D.
It will happen by default. It will happen by default.
All right. Thank you.
1606E.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. Now, are you willing to allow for third reading? If so.
Yeah, I think we could.
We had the public hearing.
We do have to allow, so.
We need to allow, and we need to be anonymous.
Sorry, we need to allow it only if we did it all on the same day.
It is the same day.
We did that first reading before the public.
Oh, did we? That was the first reading today?
Yeah, that's.
Good times, good times.
What, I'm just curious, what would be the implication of waiting till our next meeting to pass this? Would there be any?
It has an implication regarding the rates.
It does.
Getting N-MAX, getting N-MAX advice to get the billing going in January. So it creates a shortage.
Well, I would move to allow third reading of bylaw E, or bylaw 1606E.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. So now.
I'll move third reading for bylaw 1606E.
Thank you. All in favor? All right. Thanks. So this is passed, we're good. So now that we have Danny still there, Danny, we're going to put you back on the.
On the hot seat.
On the hot seat, and help us to carry on our conversation then. So my, my question for you, Danny, is for, for the requisition. What exactly are you going to requisition?
Well, it kind of goes a couple of different ways here. Traditionally, I have put in all the lines on these, on this budget, and I did intentionally leave that one line in regards to capital replacement. It's actually on the bottom of the page here, is blank, because I wanted to open up discussion based on for fleet replacement. I didn't want to add a line on there for that reason. I wanted to have conversations and see if we were going to adopt any of this, and then whatever that is, that would go on that line. We've also had other discussions with both the county and the town, with Jeff and Murray, in regards to that, is if we were going to do something, the option was to keep that money aside to the respective councils, and they hang on to those funds until we need those funds to buy something, an apparatus, whatever. So that's, that's kind of where it is. That's kind of where we left it, as we introduced it last, last month.
Counselor.
So just for my clarity, then, what we'd be looking at is initially, we'd be passing this operational budget, and that will be where our requisitions would come from.
Correct.
Yes, this one. That would be the requisition amount? And then, from a council perspective, based on your conversations with Jeff and Murray, each individual council would reserve a set amount of funds each year with the idea that when a vehicle needed to be replaced, that then there would be funding available at that point to make that determination.
And I think collectively, from the board, they should decide from your councils, that X amount of dollars are equal, it's not in percentages. That's something that's been suggested.
Why do you look at it as equal?
Well, I mean, what I'm saying, if we could do it one of two ways, and being equal, if the town was going to take some, the county would share, it should be equal. That was one possibility. The other way, traditionally, as the requisitions are concerned, it's based on percentages.
So why wouldn't you?
So I'm putting that out there. That's, that's, that has not been decided yet. So that was for part of the conversation.
Because equal for villages would be very difficult to absorb.
Absolutely, yeah.
Right now, we have the share, the lion's share as a town, so we're probably more like 55%.
I think it's 51%.
51.
And I don't, well, maybe I'm talking outside the box here, but I don't know how that percentage was ever arrived at.
Population of the western, western side of the county and the population of Carson, based on population.
Okay.
Yeah. I have to assess it based on the same model. So here is my question for you. Your board will then approve a certain amount of capital expenditure?
Sorry, for the.
For the 2016? For that time that you cannot put.
Yeah, I mean, if we're, if we're going to do something with a fleet replacement, it's not going to reflect on the budget anyway, if you folks are going to hang on to the funds.
Yeah, but what's a policy that you're going to have in place?
Well, that's up for discussion, as the board respectively needs to go back to their councils, from what I understand, and decide on how they want to do it, or what their preferences are. Nothing's been decided.
Because right now, you're looking at $124,000 a year on this, according to the expiry date as per listing that you mentioned.
With the caveat that that doesn't include any residual value.
Exactly.
So it could be considered less. But it's not a requisition amount that's being requisitioned. That's a determination that we make as a council of how much money we're putting aside for future replacement.
So you're looking more for a town policy?
That's what it sounds like, that's what it sounds like to me.
Is that what a county is willing to do?
Well, I haven't heard back from the county, so I can't.
No, I'm just questioning, do I have a sense where we're going with this?
Well.
Because it's quite new.
Yeah, it is new. And I can say that something like this was presented, and I think you might recall, back in 2010, 2011, and was never adopted. A lot of the apparatuses are the same, some are new, but the costs are getting higher rather than going down because of the age of the vehicles.
Okay. So if we go back to your operational, it shows less, obviously, because the capital, the total capital budget is no longer reflecting that $20,000 that you had.
Correct.
So in fact, once we refactored that in, it's quite an increase over the previous year.
Yes.
Well, it is.
Yeah.
So is that something that you have thought about? Is your bad debt something? Because essentially, the increase, from what I can figure out, is about the amount of your bad debts. And I understand the bad debts are essentially occurring because of the county not having come forth with the money yet, with their citizens. Is there something that's going to happen there? Are we going to have a policy or something? Or should we draft a common policy regarding bad debt to help you?
We've had numerous conversations, that is, I have had numerous conversations with the county, and there, hopefully, and I say hopefully, I haven't got 100% commitment from the county, saying that that billing process is going to change within the county. That is, I'm going to invoice the county for any fire occurrences within the county. They're going to pay me, and the county can assume whether or not they're going to pursue the bills.
Do you know?
So that would go away.
Do you know if they're going to pay that $14,000 before the end of the year?
No, they will not.
So you will have to carry it out in 2016 still? Because that's $14,000, that's what the increase of your requisition is. It's kind of funny for us to have to pay the share of something that you don't bear.
So that's actually not the numbers that I get?
What you get?
Well, the increase in bad debt is only $2,000. The increase in the requisition total amount is $26,000.
No, no, but what I was trying to say altogether, the amount that is still to be collected is $14,000, correct? You have.
Correct, yes.
You still have to collect $14,000.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, but the total increase in requisition, though, is $26,000.
Yeah, no, I know that.
Okay.
I know that. Yeah, okay, so it's double, doubled the bad debt. Close to. So this is something that I was wondering, should we have, or do you have in your bylaw, or do you have something in your agreement regarding bad debts and how we're going to deal with that? Because we could be the bearer of bad debts, for that matter. We could be the one who in town calls you to have citizens who don't pay.
Right.
We don't have that right now, but we could.
That's because mostly insurance covers those, those costs.
That's the difference.
That's the problem, because in the county, they don't have the same insurance policies. The insurance to fight a fire, let's say, Boundary Creek, is going to cost a lot more than the town person's going to have to pay. So some of those people choose not to because they can't afford it.
See, in town, if your house burns down or catches fire, your insurance policy covers the cost of the fire department going out there.
Anyway.
And also, as far as the town taxes, the cost of fire, the fire department is built into the taxes, or in the county it is not.
Yeah, but what I was trying to say, that $14,000 is part of that requisition, therefore we pay.
Your percentage of.
A percentage of something that not to do.
So the county has said, and that really comes down to being a county issue, they have got to put something in place to require that. We talked about it briefly.
Yeah, and we've talked about that quite a while.
Yeah. But I feel I have to do my due diligence to reflect it, so it's transparent.
No, I understand that, but I also understand that we then requisition for something that has nothing to do with us.
And myself, as a rate payer in town, don't feel I should.
Well, maybe when we are requisitioned, maybe it would be fair to reflect that amount out for that now.
Maybe that will be one of the conversations that we have at our next meeting.
There you go. Okay. And can you just give me a little bit of information on the $425 per firefighter that you have? Help me understand what the Alberta Caldera paramedic registration is. Help me understand what that helps them with.
Yeah, basically, we have a lot of the volunteer firefighters throughout the county and the town that are registered now with Alberta Caldera paramedics, where there's a $425 annual fee that they, as volunteers, have to pay right now.
Okay.
Going back further with that, the volunteer firefighters are at a very minimal hourly rate when they fight fires. And I'm just suggesting, and I put that in there as a budgetary number, where we perhaps pay that for them, so they can still continue to do their services. perhaps pay that for them, so they can still continue to do their services as a volunteer. So as being, it has a perk, basically, as a volunteer firefighter, we pay that for them. We've never done it before.
So that is something that any firefighter has to belong to?
Yes, if we're going to be licensed and practice for the ambulance, because we do rodeos, we could enhance our service. The next board meeting on the 3rd of December, Alberta Health Services is going to come and do a presentation for their MFR program. If the fire department is called out, we can provide a certain level, and there's four levels for the province, we can practice what they've been trained to do.
Okay. So essentially, it's an education piece along with licensing?
It's basically a license for them to operate as a medical caregiver.
All right. Thank you. Well, now I understand what that is. I did not know what it was. Thank you. You got my answers.
Did it pass?
You're enlightened of this.
Thank you, Danny.
Yeah. Thank you. Do you need a recess?
Well, Councilor Baker has a question for Danny.
Oh, okay.
Danny?
Danny, I'm so sorry.
Danny, I've got a couple of questions for you.
Okay.
You've got a lot of your expenses, building insurance. Does the town not own that building?
Yes, they do.
And do we not insure it?
It is insured through the town. I pay the premiums.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
And on the vehicle liability, insurance on the vehicle liability?
Yes.
What's the story there, too?
All the fire trucks.
All the fire trucks?
Everything, yeah.
That's it? All right. Thank you so much.
Okay.
All right. Councilor Bond is asking if we could recess for five minutes.
I move to recess for five minutes.
Thank you. All in favor? Yeah.
Get your hand up.
I want to see you suffer.
Make a note.
Make a note.
Sorry, I missed.
Record a vote.